Citing the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the February 23 Lincoln County Commission meeting. We've got a full agenda today, and according to Commissioner Gibbon, big packet means short meeting, so we're going to find out if that's the case or not. We've adopted the practice where the speaker doesn't wear a mask, so if you see me without a mask here, it's not flouting the policy, but we've adopted a new practice of doing that for whoever's speaking to ensure the public can hear us and we're clear with regard to the record we're making. So I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda at this time.
So move.
I'll second.
Shaun, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes. Just so everybody knows, with regard to point number two on the agenda, the claims where it says $344,532.58, Shaun informed me before the meeting that there is a slight adjustment to that in the amount of $344,187.4, so a couple hundred dollars off on there. We've got the reports in our packet. We'll move on to the consent agenda. At this time, I'll consider a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Shaun, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes. Now is the time and place for public comment. Does anybody in the public wish to make a comment today?
Good morning. Betty Otten, 46787273rd Street, T., South Dakota 57064. Good morning. My comments will not come as surprise, as I mailed all of you after my request to add these items to today's commission agenda was declined this last Friday by the chair with the invitation to use this time of public comment instead. My comments are edited and are less than five minutes. It was Monday, February 8th, over two weeks ago, that I submitted an online public agenda item request for this county commission meeting to address two items. Number one, that Commissioner Poppins and Landine's request to change the Planning and Zoning Committee bylaws to make the Lincoln County Commission rep the chair be rescinded, which would have made Mr. Poppins the Chair of Planning and Zoning. And number two, that because of blatant conflicts of interest, that Mr. Poppins resigned from Planning and Zoning and be replaced with another commissioner. That weekend during a legislative coffee, my husband and I were told that Mr. Poppins had been appointed to the Planning and Zoning, but I was here that day and I'd missed that appointment, so I had to go back and research the commission minutes to find his appointment, and was indeed made on January 5th with Chair Landine pointing herself the alternative. According to the agenda file for that day, January 5th, the 2020 Planning and Zoning Commission board member was Lincoln County Commissioner Tiffany Landine, and the alternate was Commissioner Joel Aaronz. So my question is, why was Mr. Poppins appointed to Planning and Zoning instead of Mr. Aaronz? And why did Ms. Landine appoint herself to Planning and Zoning again this year as the alternative? We were told once again that this certainly was, did not follow past precedent. Then we were told that Commissioners Landine and Poppins are once again trying to change the rules by changing the Planning and Zoning bylaws without any notice or transparency, which would give the Chair of Planning and Zoning to Mr. Poppins, which again went against all past precedent of having one of the appointed district representatives serve as its chair. It's interesting to note that researching the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission, that Commissioner Landine brought up the bylaw change at their very first meeting of January 19th under New Business, consideration of amendments to Planning and Zoning Commission bylaws. Toby Brown noted that Commissioner Mike Poppins had been designated as the county commission rep and proposed amending the bylaws so the county board rep would be the chairperson and only vote on items in a tie. Additional proposed amendments would streamline the agenda. Motion by Landine to table until Commissioner Poppins is in attendance. We were given this information with this question. How can a commissioner with a land development, construction, and building business even be appointed to Planning and Zoning as it's seen as a huge conflict of interest? Just last week at the February 16th Planning and Zoning meeting, Chair Gary Pashby asked Mr. Poppins to give the county commission update, and Mr. Poppins noted, "I've talked to many leaders and private individuals in the housing market that people are flocking here. We are going to see expanded growth beyond our belief." This again highlights the conflict of interest with this commissioner. I am relieved to note that the change to the Planning and Zoning bylaws making him chair was rescinded before the vote was taken. Bottom line, I was not surprised my agenda request was refused by the chair, so this commission wouldn't have the opportunity for discussion. But commissioners, the optics are just wrong. It's seen as self-serving. I'm believing the others who voiced their opposition to this responded to you as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to make a public comment today? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the rest of our commission business. First agenda item is a second public reading and public hearing, which is scheduled for 9:05. It's 8:36 this morning, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, and once we hit 9:05, we'll commence the hearing.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Can we do the Commissioner report?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I'm just rolling through. Are there any commissioners who have a report for the public and for the commission?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
The Nationalist...
The National Association of Counties is launching a County for Kids campaign, and it's a campaign where the county commissioners, he does it, forming a committee to assist families in this difficult time with any childhood diseases or childhood situations that are reflecting them. And Counties for Kids champion and join a national movement of county leaders dedicated to improving outcomes for infants and toddlers. The Counties for Kids website hosts, and this is on the NACO website, host educational materials, resources, and toolkits with customized templates to help leaders provide this information to new mothers and to new families. So one of the things I just wanted to say that I have talked with the necessary people at NACO, and we'll be providing that kind of information to be brought down to see whether Lincoln County wishes to participate in the Counties for Kids campaign. And I think, once you see that, I think you'll like it, and I think it does provide a service. So that'll be coming up here in the next month during one of the meetings in March. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Schmidt. Is there any other commissioners who wish to be heard? If not, I'll take the opportunity just to give the public and the commission a update on where we're at with the Courthouse Improvement Advisory Committee. We've held two meetings so far. The first one, two months ago. All of the members were in attendance, either personally or over the phone. And we held our second meeting about a month ago. During our first meeting, we had all of the members of the committee tour the courthouse, went from top to bottom, or bottom to top, I guess, and the public, or the public's representatives, got an opportunity to see what we're looking at in this county in terms of our courthouse and what may or may not need to be done. They were allowed access to all the offices in the new part of the courthouse and the old part of the courthouse. We went into the attic. Some of the members chose not to for obvious reasons, but everyone had the access and opportunity to view all the nooks and crannies of the courthouse, and they took advantage of it. At the second meeting that we held about a month ago, the presiding judge, Howman, and Judge Rasmussen, who is stationed here in Canton, came into the meeting and gave a presentation on what they believe their needs are for the judicial system here in Lincoln County moving forward. And they gave a very comprehensive presentation, and that presentation in PowerPoint form is available on the Courthouse Improvement website, which is within our county website. And then Andrew Etrom from Architecture Incorporated also gave a presentation, and his presentation was on the feedback that he got with the different departments that he's interviewed. So if you recall, we, this commission authorized a needs assessment where Arc Inc. goes around and asks all the different departments, how much space do you think you'll need today, tomorrow, five years, 10 years into the future? And from an architectural and an engineering standpoint, he put that together, and he did the same thing with our judges and court staff as well, and they came up with a presentation as well. I don't know if Andrew's presentation is online posted yet. According to Jake, he's given me the thumbs up, so if the public or the staff wants to look at the results of the needs assessment, they can do so on the Internet, and this is open and available to the public, and you can apply whatever amount of scrutiny you want to that. We have our next third meeting coming up on March 3rd at 7 o'clock. It'll be here in these commission chambers. It'll be also broadcast online over the Internet, and we welcome the public to attend. What we'll be discussing at the third meeting is the needs of the sheriff's office and the state's attorney's office. And then, and they'll give their presentations to us, and the sheriff has told me he has a presentation, and I'm also of the understanding the state's attorney is going to come in and do the same thing. So if you want to know what they're looking at in terms of their needs, both now and into the future, that's the meeting to come to. And then our fourth and additional follow-on meetings, and we'll meet as much as we need to, will be the different elected officials and department heads of the county coming in to talk about and get into the weeds of all their needs assessment results as well. So that's kind of the way forward for right now. I guess I would call that Phase One. We'll talk about what the county's needs are, and then maybe as we progress, and I'm just thinking out loud, of course, but Phase Two is going to start talking about what potential courses of action are solutions to those needs moving into the future. So more to come on that, and I know that some of the commissioners wanted a report, and that is the report I have with regard to the Courthouse Improvement Committee. We will move on to Agenda Item Number Two under Regular Business, Consider Resolution Regarding a Preliminary Subdivision Plan, and I'd ask Toby to come forward and present that to the commission. Is it? So we need to do that as part of the public hearing? Okay. Well, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three then, Approved Temporary and Permanent Easements. Is Terry Floyd available? And I'm going to assume he probably needs to come up because he didn't think he might be presenting at this time.
I can give him a call.
Thank you, Shaun.
You betcha.
Wendy, yeah. Fairground Sign Design with Wendy Sweeter.
Yes, we have been working with the Lenox Sunstrom FFA chapter, and they want to do a trade to use our facility for their contest, and so we had talked about having them make us a sign for the grounds because we don't currently have any signage out there, so Jake made this design as a possibility to make a sign out of. So I just want to know if the commission is okay with this sign design. The plan would be that they would make two identical signs of this and make it into a V, so it would be on the west side of the fence, kind of near the driveway, but then people would be able to see the sign coming from the north or the south. And then we would like to put a flagpole in between the Vs to be put up, so that's what we're just looking for is approval of the design.
Commission?
That was, excuse me. That was just in exchange for using the property for a short period of time or one day?
It's for one day.
One day. It sounds like a wonderful thing. Do you know the schematics as to the size of the sign and all that yet?
I know John has the metal for that, and I believe it's four by nine-foot sheets.
I think that sounds like a fair trade, so I would move to authorize the exchange.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so I've got a motion and second to approve the exchange of goods of value, as well as, Mike, does your motion also include approving that design?
Yeah, that approves the design as well, so.
Okay, very well. And does your second include that, Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussion? If there's no further discussion, Shaun, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Terry. Good morning.
Good morning. I've got several items here for you. First item is going to be approving and authorizing the chair to sign temporary and perpetual easements for Structure 42-090-054.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Terry, where is that?
That is from last year's project. That's the Hoffman Pipe Project.
Oh, okay.
So, yep.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, Shaun, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
All right, next item I have is going to be approving or having, authorizing or awarding the bids for 2021 supply bids for the Highway Department. So I'll just get going. I think we need separate resolutions for each one, approving and awarding. So first one we're going to be doing is we're going to be doing the concrete products. We had three bidders this year, Chemcast and Precast, Chemcast Pipe and Precast, Handcook Concrete Products, and Forterra Concrete Products. In the past, we've awarded to all of them because there are certain products on each one of them that are cheaper than the others, so we just kind of handpick on which ones we want to get. So my suggestion would be to, recommendation would be to award bids to all three of those.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Highway Department Superintendent's suggestion.
Got a motion to approve all three bids separately. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask Shaun to call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Next item I have is crush concrete. We had two bidders, Merlyn Roy's Paving and Concrete Materials. Merlyn Roy's was low bid with $11.60 a ton, and Concrete Materials was $12.60, so recommendation is to award it to Merlyn Roy's for $11.60 per ton.
Is there a motion to that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Shaun, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Next item I have is cutting edges, snowplow blades. We had four bidders this year. I will begin with the low bid, and again, we bid on two items, so I will list these items. We have four-foot cutting edges and three-footers. So for the three-foot cutting edges, pricing DMC wear parts, $127.34. Equipment blades, $129. Butler machine, $152.11. And Titan machinery is $172.66 per blade. The next item we have is four-foot cutting edges. DMC wear is $169.79. Equipment blades is $172. Butler machine is $179.02, and Titan machine is $230.20. My recommendation is to go with the low bid on both of these items. It is DMC wear parts.
Commissioners, you've heard Terry Floyd, our Highway Superintendent's, request. Is there a motion?
Also moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Shaun, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Next item I have is diesel fuel and ethanol gas. Again, these here, we're bidding two items. We had four bidders this year. We had a, one of the bidders, I found out yesterday, so I don't have an updated bid tab for you, but one of the bidders had pulled out, had rescinded their bid, so we're down to three. So I'll read them off. For the diesel, number two diesel, Kohl's Petroleum was $196 a gallon. CHS Farm Alliance was $210 a gallon, and Farstead Oil was Opus Daily minus one cent. Gas, 10% ethanol gas, Kohl's Petroleum was $217 a gallon. CHS Farms Alliance was $229 a gallon, and Farstead Oil, Opus Daily minus one cent. So we have, the Farstead Oil, they bid every year, but it's not a firm bid because it's going on market value, so that one there right away is excluded, so my recommendation is to award both the gas and the diesel to Kohl's Petroleum.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion on the motion recommendation, Shaun, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Next item I have is mag chloride. This is per gallon. We only had one bidder, and that is Dustbusters Incorporated at $0.96 a gallon. My recommendation is to award it to them.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Shaun, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Next I have plant mixed asphalt, so this is the hot mix we get for doing our paving. Again, here I have three items that we were bidding. We have Type 1 hot mix, we have fines, and then we have a cold patch, cold mix. So we're going to start with the Class G Type 1 or 2 hot mix. We have two bidders. We had Merlyn Roy's at $53.90, and we had Concrete Materials at $54. So on that one, and I had already talked to both vendors, since there's only a 10-cent difference, one is on the east side, one is on the west side. Typically, it's closer for us to do the west side, but there, probably half the time during the year, we get kicked over to the east side. I told them, you know, when we get kicked out of the west side, we'll go over and pick it up from you guys, so they're both okay with it, so I would like to award that one to both of those bidders, since there's only a dime difference.
You've heard the recommendation and the request. Is there any action?
Makes sense. I'll make the motion to accept both of those for convenience purposes, okay?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Shaun, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Next item I have is going to be, as well as the hot mix, it's going to be fines mix. Two bidders, again, Merlyn Roy's at $93.50 a ton, Concrete Materials at $100 a ton, so my recommendation would be to award that to Merlyn Roy's.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Shaun, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Last thing is cold mix, UPM. Two bidders, again, Merlyn Roy's did not bid, so Concrete Materials had the only bid at $115.50, so my recommendation is to award it to Concrete Materials.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Shaun, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Next item I have is riprap. Again, in this class, we're bidding three items, and again, I will read these off. We had two bidders on this. LG Everest was one. One of the pricing is for Del Rapids Pickup, and the other pricing is for Hay Warden. So typically, we'll probably award both of them, and then the other one is Concrete Materials, and they just bid one of the classes. So my recommendation is going to be to, and I'll let you know here, so Class A Riprap, LG Everest Del Rapids, $23.95. LG Everest Hay Warden, $31.85, so my recommendation is going to be award both of those. I'm guessing we won't run up to Del Rapids to get it. It's a long ways to go. It might be worth the money just to stay down at Hay Warden, so.
So moved on the recommendation for my, on the riprap.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Shaun, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Next item is Class B Riprap. Again, on this one, Concrete Materials did bid, but LG Everest Del Rapids is $24.15 a ton. Hay Warden is $32.05 a ton, and Concrete Materials is $40 a ton, so my recommendation is to award to LG Everest on both of those.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Shaun, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Last item I have on there is Class C Riprap. Again, there's only one bidder, two sites, LG Everest, $24.45 a ton, and 33, and that's in Del Rapids, and in Hay Warden, it's $33.25, so my recommendation is to award it to LG Everest.
You've heard the recommendation.
I would so move to accept LG Everest.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Shaun, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Right, we're getting near the end here, so. Next item I have is Rock Salt, and transportation for that, we had four bidders this year, and I'll read off the totals. Blackstrap Incorporated was $75 a ton. Nebraska Salt and Grain is $75.69 a ton. Johnson Feed was $76, and Central Salt was $78.35, so a low bid is, and my recommendation is to go with Blackstrap at $75 a ton.
You've heard the recommendation.
I'll so move.
Second.
Any discussion? Shaun, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
All right, last item I have for supply bids is weed chemical. Again, we bid three items, so I'll go with the Torodon. We had three bidders for the Torodon, 22K. It's Van Dees Supply had $39.60 a gallon. Nutrients Solutions was $39.70 a gallon, and Nutrients Solutions is $65.83. My recommendation on that one will be to award to Van Dees at $39.60 a gallon.
You've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion?
Question, Terry, why is there such a difference between the high and the low there?
Well, the one is the Nutrient Solutions out of Spearfish. That's one that typically bids every year. Probably about a week before we had opening, I got a call from a guy over in Parker. Again, there must be a Nutrients over there, and he wanted to know if he could bid, and I'm like, well, you're going to be bidding against, I mean, you're kind of the same parent company, but, yeah, I don't know why the huge difference in cost there between the two of those Nutrient Solutions. I have no idea. He was high on everything pretty significantly, but.
Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, Shaun, please call the roll. Seeing none. Sean, please call the roll.
I'm sorry.
I have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll so move, Mr. Chair.
I was on autopilot there.
I'll second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion now? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Next item I have under chemicals is 24D Aqua Aquatic Labeling. And Van Dees Supply was 850 a gallon. Nutrient Solutions out of Spearfish was 850 a gallon. Nutrients, Nutrient Solutions out of Parker was 22.50. So my recommendation is to award to Van Dees Supply and Nutrient Solutions out of Spearfish. Both at 850 a gallon.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
All right, last item I have is going to be Milestone. Again, there's the three bidders. The price is going to be Van Dees Supply is $265 a gallon. Nutrient Solutions out of Spearfish, $265 a gallon. Nutrient Solutions out of Parker is $329.68. So my recommendation is to award to Van Dees Supply and Nutrient Solutions out of Spearfish at $265 a gallon.
You've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion?
I'll so move.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
All right, my last item I have today is the approval to purchase metal culverts and bridge materials off the 2021 Beetle County bid. Again, that packet of information, I believe, is in your folder. So we're hoping to just to purchase off of theirs rather than bidding ourselves.
You've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion or any questions?
I make a motion that we accept, but they, to buy the culverts off the bid by our Highway Superintendent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
That's all I got, gentlemen. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Terry. And just so the public knows, there is an extensive packet that Terry had worked up that he provides ahead of time. So that we've had the opportunity to review if commissioners so wish. So we weren't just rattling things off that Terry was saying, you know. There is a bid tabulation sheet there. And frankly, if anybody wants to see it after the fact, they can ask him for it. Okay, I've got 9:03, so we've got a couple of minutes before our public hearing. I've got agenda item number seven, a request to modify legal newspapers with our auditor.
Good morning. So what I want to do is I want to talk about removing Beersford Republic as a legal newspaper. There's been some issues with publications, affidavits. I've tried to come up with a resolve for other publication issues. I can't get one with this. We would still publish with them, so we're not going to take their money away from them. But we would just take that legal newspaper title away, so we wouldn't have to depend on them if they miss a publication date or anything else.
You've heard the recommendation. Is there any discussion or questions?
Have you had any discussion with them?
We have.
And what was their comment?
There wasn't really a comment. They, without getting into their business, they have a lighter staff than most of the newspapers. So we only have, we're only able to contact them on Fridays. By that time, all the other newspapers have already published. It's hard for us to get anything stopped, so then we're ended up spending double publication if they miss a date. But again, I'm not saying that we don't publish to them, so they would still get the funds. I'm just saying that we would take them off as a legal newspaper, so that when they don't publish or when something does get missed, we don't have to start the process over, which we've had to do a couple of times already this year.
Any other problems with the other newspapers?
There has been, but they also have where we can get the second publication stopped. With, with these guys, if they're not in the office till Friday, the other papers have already published or have their deadlines set up. So, and we, with the publication, we also set it out a little different. So we've got a spare week in there for notices and whatnot to try to remedy that. But this one, we, if we don't notice that they don't publish it, nobody's in the office till Friday, so the other papers have already done it. It's just, and we also had problems with them getting us affidavits, which we were going to lose grant money on the highway because of, and there was no recourse for that either.
You've heard the request. Is there any more questions or discussion for the auditor? Is there a motion?
Is that a no?
Well, consider this the, the most.
Quiet, everybody's been.
Well, you know, they're just taking, they're just taking an opportunity to think about it.
Again, we're not gonna, they're not going to lose any money. We're still going to publish with them. We're just not going to have the legal newspaper lock on it.
I think one, always when you talk local papers, you're talking about a lifeblood is publishing the official minutes of any publication.
That's why we're still going to publish.
So we're still publishing our official minutes. They still get paid per inch.
Yep.
The only thing that we've changed is, is not the legal newspaper.
Right.
We now have legal newspapers from Lenox and T and from the Argus Leader and from the Sioux Valley News, correct?
Yep.
So we have ample amount. While I don't have any problems with the newspaper in, in Beersford, but if they suffer no official hardship at all financially, I think in lieu of the fact of the difficulties that you have experienced, I would move that we remove them from the legal status and remain with the other four outlets.
Is there a second to Commissioner Schmidt's motion?
Just keep in mind that it costs us a lot of money to rerun these hearings and, you know, in four newspapers now.
Can you define what a lot is?
Well, it's at least 150 a publication round every time.
Per newspaper?
Per newspaper.
Per week.
Do I have a second? Going once? Going twice? Well, no sale. So I think for lack of a second, does any other commissioner want to take action on this at this time? Does anybody want to bring a motion to table the agenda item?
I will, I would move, Mr. Chairman, that we table this so that everybody gets an opportune and perhaps a better understanding of what the auditor has requested, so that they can understand the difficulty that they appreciate in their office with the redundancy that they have to experience with this particular publication. So I would move that we table this for, to next week or two weeks, whatever it would take for a better understanding of the auditor's situation.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion to table? Hearing none. Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Okay, I've got 9:09 AM on February 23rd. And so now is the time and place for a second reading and second public hearing on an ordinance as, as displayed in the agenda.
This is the second reading and second public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County regarding a change of zone request for a portion, 141 acres of the property legally described as a southeast quarter, except lot H1 of section 34, township 100 north, range 49 west of the 5th Principal Meridian, Lincoln County, South Dakota, from the A1 Agricultural Zoning District and RC Recreation Conservation Zoning District to the RR Rural Residential Zoning District. Planning Commission recommends approval 4 to 1. Location is the northwest corner of the intersection of 273rd Street and 480th Avenue, near Harrisburg.
Thank you, Sean. Appreciate you reading the description there. Because it's a public hearing, our normal process is to start with a staff introduction and then proponents and opponents, and then a reply. So Toby, would you do us the courtesy of providing staff presentation on the?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Toby Brown, representing county planning. On the screen, you can see the location of this property is in the northeast quadrant of the county. It's approximately three and a half miles from the east of the city of Harrisburg. It's on the southern corner adjacent to Lake Alvin. It's also at the intersection of county highway 135 and county highway 110. As you can also see on the screen, this property is outside of the subdivision authority of the city of Harrisburg. Applicant for this, or the applicant for this application is Eric Willitson on behalf of the Carolyn and Porter Trust.
Are there any questions?
Just a couple more things.
For Toby or the staff?
So the subject property is 160 acres. As you can see, it's dual zoned, A1 Agricultural and RC Recreation Conservation. The property is improved with a, with a, with a single-family dwelling and some associated agricultural structures. Again, this property, as you're aware, the 2009 revised zoning ordinance for Lincoln County restricts single-family dwellings to one per quarter, quarter or lots of records. This particular property is a lot of record, and so again, that's divisible by the total parcel size by, by 40 acres. So this property does have by right, three building eligibilities associated with it. So as you're aware, this item was tabled at the December Board of Commissioners meeting. There was discussion of the preliminary plan, which is item number two on this agenda, was tabled by the Planning Commission, so there was no forwarded recommendation of that. As well as there was some concern by the commissioners of the size of the, the concept size of the rezoning, as well as some additional items associated with traffic, and then also septic systems. So subsequent to that meeting, staff did have a discussion with the applicant, and the applicant has decreased the overall size of the concept plan by about 25%. So to go from 72 lots to 54 lots. The applicant did this by increasing the total lot sizes by two acre minimums. And as you are well, as you are well aware too, is that staff reports identify that this application is not in conformance with the Lincoln County Conference of Plan or the Lincoln County Zoning Ordinance. However, over the years, this commission has changed the zone of a number of parcels that are adjacent to Lake Alvin or in the vicinity of Lake Alvin. As again, as Deputy Auditor pointed out, that the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this petition 4 to 1. With that, I'd be happy to answer your questions that you have for staff at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Toby. At this time, I would invite the proponents up to make their presentation.
Morning, Eric Willitson, Willitson Land Engineering here, representing the Porter Trust on the project. As Toby has indicated, we have decreased the density on the project quite a bit. All lot sizes are a minimum of, of two acres. And there's several adjacent to the, to the north edge, Lake Alvin, that are substantially larger than that. Preliminary subdivision plans have been revised as well to address staff comments. I believe we're at the point now where we've, we've addressed everything and, and are ready to move forward. With that, I guess I'd answer any questions that commissioners might have.
Mr. Willitson, I just wanted to tell you, I, I drove up, I voiced some concerns at the last meeting about septics and densities. But I did drive up to your, this particular property. And I think that when you've increased it to a minimum size or size of two acres, which really alleviates the problem to me of septic situations, because you have two acres in which to do that. So I, I liked your new subdivision plan. Quite honestly, I think you did a good job.
Thank you, sir.
Any other commissioners with questions or comments for the proponent? Mr. Willitson, anything else?
I guess we didn't encourage the commission to support the project. We think it's, fits in well with the, the Lake Alvin area and the, the development that's going on in that area. And like to, I know the Porters would like to move the project forward. We're excited about the, the prospects of opening this up. So with that, I guess if you have any other questions, let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One question, going in and out now, is, is, is that mostly along 110 or along 135?
On the, yeah, the, the main, main access point, I guess, there's one off both paved roads. Both of the, the county highways are obviously are paved. But I think the main one will be off the North-South Road, and it's directly across from the, the access point across the street or whatever, right at the top of the hill there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any opponents who'd wish test, well, any further proponents? Seeing none, I'll.
I would speak as a proponent.
Okay, thank you, Andrew.
Just the city, as Toby did point out, we are only a half mile away with our joint plating jurisdiction, or with our plating jurisdiction. We do think that rural residential is good in this spot. There are some concerns we still have though with the preliminary plan, which is up next. And I was under the understanding that the zoning wouldn't be approved until the plan was acceptable. So we do think this is a good plan. We don't know that it should go ahead at this moment. If it was half a mile to the west, we wouldn't ask for substantial changes, but we, there would be some tweaks. But the way the preliminary plan is right now, it's not so much that it lacks detail, because that can be added in the engineering plans, but it's that it has facts in it that we think are up for dispute, I guess, in terms of drainage, road ownership, and things like that.
And Andrew, I did receive your memo this morning, so thanks for sending that.
Yeah, sorry.
Is that fair game for distribution then?
It is.
Okay, very well. Are there any further proponents of the proposal? Okay, seeing none. Are there any opponents who would like to be heard at this time? Any opponents? Okay, seeing none. We'll close the hearing at this time. And I'll ask my fellow commissioners, do you have any questions, comments, or discussion? Or do you want to take any action?
Mr. Chairman, I, you know, so we can, we've, we've, we'd vaulted on this for some time. And as I've commented previously, Mr. Willitson did go back and reconfigure this entire area. And it is, you know, it is an ideal spot. I can only imagine that two acres, lots like that have a great appeal to individuals, and that is in a location right next to water becomes even more ideal. So I don't see any objections why we shouldn't move forward with this. forward with this, but I'll defer to my other Commissioners for any comments they have.
I like the size of the lots. I think that has improved the presentation that, from when I first heard it in November.
Any further discussion by the Commission?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So if I'm understanding, there may be some support on this based on changing the lot size, I would suggest then that we look at our subdivision plans and make that change moving forward for all properties. So there isn't a, an issue for trying to decide why one property will get rezoned and why another property may not if the, if it falls down to just the lot size, so.
Mr. Chairman, are you looking for a motion to get this thing off the, get this thing moving?
I am. I'm looking for-
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we do rezone this from ag to rural residential, given what the engineer, Mr. Willitsen, has provided for us and the changes that he has made.
Toby, are we following the right procedure there by taking that motion? Is there a second to Commissioner Schmidt's motion?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
Toby, I will have a clarification because it seems like this has gotten maybe some sway because of the proposed changes, which is our next item. Really, actually comes down to the plan though that gets, would get implemented. There's no restriction that we would be able to implement that they had to be two acre lots, correct?
Correct. This is just the concept plan. The action that you're taking is to actually change the zoning, official zoning map to reflect this, this exhibit here. So that the southwest or the southeast corner is left ag, the top part's left RC, and the farmstead has remained ag. So the rest of it, you're changing the zone of that to rural residential is the action before you.
The natural follow-up question then, Toby, is to alleviate that concern of Commissioner Poppins. That step where this Commission could, for example, require or mandate that, that's taken in the next action, correct?
That's when you adopt the preliminary plan, correct?
Okay.
But if I may, I don't know that we would have grounds if, if the plan, final plan were to change back to a one acre lot. We'd really have reasons to deny as long as it met our comprehensive plan. What I'm trying to stress is, I do, I do like the plan and I think maybe we should start to implement that in for all plans. So we're, we're treating everyone equally. Because if, if this one go, as this one will probably go through, there'll be additional properties coming down the road. And I would like us not to stumble on the legalities of one development versus another. If, if the reasons we're approving this is because of the size of the lots, then I think we should strongly consider implementing that into our plan, our overall requirements so that everyone's treated equally, so.
Any further discussion on the motion in second?
I'll call the question, Mr. Chairman.
Very well. Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Okay, agenda item number two. Now is the time and place to consider a resolution of Lincoln County approving the preliminary subdivision plan for Porter's Eagle Ridge Estates. Toby?
Property is currently described as a southeast quarter, except lot H1 of section 34, township 100 north, par 49 west of the 5th Principal Meridian, Lincoln County, South Dakota, the northwest corner of the intersection of 273rd Street and 480th Avenue near Harrisburg. Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero.
Thank you, Sean.
So the applicant has submitted a preliminary plan in conjunction with the change of zone application. With that change of zone, the applicant can now then subdivide the property into multiple lots for single-family residential development. The applicant has submitted initial preliminary plan and then a revised preliminary plan. The preliminary plan has been reviewed by county staff and by our consultants, Wink Engineering and then also IMAG Engineering, formerly Clark. And so the consultants have recommended that all the requirements have been met in association with this. I did receive an email this morning from, on the city of Harrisburg. I did have a conversation with them on Friday. We did submit the documents to them. Some of, I briefly looked at the email. Some of the items associated, the applicant did have attorney put together homeowners association materials and a road association agreement. And I don't believe that the city of Harrisburg had access to that. So some of the questions that they, that they brought up were identified in those, as well as throughout this review process, there's a lot of accompanying emails and things like that that clarify some of the things that are within the plan. But at this time, our consultants recommend that the required, the minimum requirements for the preliminary plan have been met. What I would remind the applicant and the board is that per the subdivision ordinance, the applicant still has to submit final development plans, which go into greater detail on grading, drainage, erosion control and some of those items prior to us allowing a plat to take place, as well as that any, no plats would be allowed unless improvements are made within the subdivision or an assurance has been agreed to with the county and the, and the applicant prior to the plating process. So I haven't had a chance to completely look through Harrisburg's comments, but I would address some of those. Might be addressed by additional conversations that staff could have with the city of Harrisburg. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
Any questions for Toby?
Toby, so one more time, they have provided for a road, the two features necessary. One was a community, what was the title you had on those two things?
Well, they've had an attorney submit to staff a copy of a homeowners association-
Homeowners Association, one.
-and a road association.
And then the road district, the other.
With, with an association, in conjunction with the homeowners association.
Okay.
And so typically, we do waive that requirement, but that was a concern at the December board meeting. So staff did require that in advance, but I would encourage you that that's just preliminary at this time until it's filed with the actual deeds. It's, it's just draft at this point in time.
Were there any concerns on the part of the Planning and Zoning Board?
No, Planning and zoning, Planning Commission recommended six to zero. What I would say is that I, I realize that, again, this is a very checklist type items. So the subdivision ordinance is, the ordinance that you've adopted has specific checklist items for preliminary plan. I would concur with everyone that it doesn't go into great detail as far as grading and drainage and those things, that that'll be further developed with the final development plans. Lincoln County has adopted that, that process because we don't want to encourage applicants to spend quite a bit of money upfront prior to them knowing if they're going to get approval or not during the rezoning process.
Any other questions for staff?
Thank you.
Thank you, Toby. Looking for action on the agenda item. Is there a motion?
I would move to approve the plan. I do want to make note that I, I find a little disturbing that we held them under a little duress to make the lots larger to get the rezone done. I think we do need to look at our plan so it's equitable for everybody. But I do like their plan.
Toby, I'm sorry. Maybe I cut you off there prematurely. Did you want to say something? Okay, yeah, good question. Actually internally, I was thinking, is the agenda item of considering a resolution technically a public hearing? Okay, so my apologies.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Poppins. So with that said, we have to continue on with a public hearing on agenda item number two. Any proponents who'd wish to speak on behalf of the agenda item?
Eric Willitsen again. Just like to express our appreciation with planning staff and the consultants who work with us to work out all the issues and come to an agreement. And as Toby indicated, we have unanimous approval or recommendation from the, your planning commission to the preliminary subdivision plans. And I, I think, and maybe you correct me if I'm wrong, but this requires that, the lot and block layout, that all the lots are two acres or more. And I don't think we could bring in a plat that was something less without changing this. Is that correct?
Okay.
So with that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Willitsen.
Thank you.
Any further proponent testimony? Hearing none. Any opponent testimony? Hearing none. I'll close the hearing and ask the Commission what action or discussion comments they wish to take.
I would again offer my motion to accept their preliminary plan as presented. Again, I, again, will stress that I would like us to look at maybe having a more unified decision for all applicants in the future, similar to this then.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion on the motion in second? Hearing none. Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes. Okay, thank you, everybody. Next agenda item here is number eight, fire detector inspection contract with Mr. Rombo.
This, this is pretty much more of a, a little bit of an informality. As per always, we have the Chairman of the Board sign the contractual agreements and we- I guess I have, if Jake wants to put it over, but I, I have the two contracts. We, we would actually probably have to approve both contracts, I guess, as per what Terry had just gone through. Because one contract is for the highway shop and the other is for this courthouse facility. Basically, we, we've always used automatic security to come in and inspect specifically the detectors and the pole stations. So being the smoke detectors, the heat detectors, they, they run around, they set them off and make sure they're talking to the fire panel. And then when all, when everything's all been tripped, we set the alarms off and make sure that all the sirens and beacons are working. So basically, we know that we're safe if the fire alarms are tripped. So the contract for, contract for the highway department is just $125 a year. Now, this contract begins next February and would, they would do the inspection again the following February under this contract and we'd be good for that full year. So if you don't have any questions and would, I guess I'd suggest that you move to approve this contract.
You've heard the recommendation. What are the Commission's wishes?
Mr. Chairman, so moved on the security contract with the automatic security company for the highway shop at $125?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
So same thing, but for this courthouse facility. It's $270.
You've heard the recommendation for fire detector inspection contract for the courthouse for $270. What are the Commission's wishes?
I'll still move. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Thank you. So the next item on my, for the agenda for me is the, the contract agreement with MidCo Communications and Midcontinent Communications to store equipment for approximately three to four months at the transfer station for a lease agreement of $600 a month.
Do you know how much equipment they're in to store there or what?
I don't know exactly, but there is a picture of the area they are expecting to utilize in that area.
Under exhibit A in the red box. Very well.
I spoke with John Hanson. I said, is there any concerns about this being a real wet area in the next few months? And he said, not typically so.
I would move to authorize the execution of this lease.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Just for clarity, John, what was the dollar amount discussed?
$600 a month.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes. Thank you, John.
John, could you keep that picture because we're going to talk about the transfer station here later on. And I, I think that's a good picture too for us for referencing.
I think Jake's pulling that up off of the-
Oh, has Jake got that? Okay. The magic man. Yeah.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item, 2021 Assessment Notice and Appeals Website by Carla Gosin, Director of Equalization. Good morning, Carla.
Good morning. Carla Gosin, Lincoln County Director of Equalization. Our assessment notices are being mailed today and we have some changes on the assessment notices that I would like to share with the Commission. There's some new language that are, we are required to make notice to all of our taxpayers per law that went into effect July 1, 2020. We are now to list all of our tax relief programs that are offered to taxpayers. Item number one is our owner occupied. So if you own and occupy a home as of November 1 and you make application by March 15, you're eligible for a tax reduction. We have disabled veteran. We have paraplegic veteran. We have a paraplegic for just an individual. We have an elderly and disabled freeze program and there is a municipal property tax reduction. Items five and six are, applications are to other offices, but we are to make notice of those programs available. With that, our assessment notice is quite busy with that new language, but I think it's going to help understand with, with some of these coatings up here, like an owner occupied coating and evaluation. With the owner occupied being listed as a tax relief program, I think it may draw some attention to folks. Another thing that we have listed on our assessment notice, this was on our notice last year in 2020. It describes an appeals website. So our folks can go out onto a website and learn about the appeals process. We have expanded it and I will do a presentation shortly and show you what some of the options are on the expanded version of our appeals website. Jake and April have been instrumental in getting this up and running. I previewed it to all of our local boards yesterday. And then the cookies over here are what's left over from our local boards. So would like to share that with the Commission or anybody in the audience. Some of our upcoming deadlines are in our timelines. One of the reasons why we started the appeal process and the appeals website, I should say, is because it's a short window of opportunity to appeal. And with mail and the uncertainty of mail because of the expanded mailings that are being taken place because of COVID, we wanted to make the timeframe a little more- we wanted to make the timeframe a little more, um, fluent or accessible to folks because mail is not always the fastest. So the appeals website is right now and I'll show that to you. So we're at, we're approaching step one. Um, we'll, we'll have the notices sent out today. Um, they are required to be in the mail by March 1. So we're ahead of that timeline and we do that for a reason because the window is short. Um, so all of our applicants have to notify their local boards of equalization by March 11. They start meeting the week of March 15 and on March 19, have to notify them by March 26. This is where the county board comes in. So keep in mind, these are the, this is the timeframe for the county boards of equalization. So keep your calendars available, um, county auditor, the commission clerk. IT and I will be sitting down shortly and, um, work up a plan that will fit your needs on the county boards of equalization. Any questions before I proceed on to the appeals website?
How much different is this, Carla, than from years past? Have you always been like ahead of the curve? Like we're in February and you got the notices going out a week ahead of time. Is that, has that been our customary pattern that we've had?
Last year they were mailed on the 26th. It all depends on when we can finalize our assessments, meet with the boards. But yes, try to always, we try to always get them out before the March 1 deadline, just because of the short window. There it is. Um, so on the assessors' assessment notice, you will type in this IP address. Appeals dot Lincoln County SD dot org. Once you do that, you come to a site that is very similar to our parcel browser site. But before entering this site, it's going to give you some information. This is the same as last year. This is very much the same, we've just expanded. It gives, um, what you're appealing. You're not appealing your tax notice, you're appealing your assessed value. Read the instructions, click okay, and then we'll type in a parcel number. It's pretty slick. So it brings you right to the property that you type in. On every assessment notices, there are, there is, there, the parcel numbers listed. So all of the taxpayers should be aware of what the parcel number is. Once you click on the parcel, you get some information on the left-hand side. It's gonna be the property owner's name, the legal description, and who your board members are. Or board clerk is. Contact information. So what we have expanded this year on this is the appeals process information. If you click here, this will give you the step-by-step instructions on how to appeal. Once you read through the instructions, and I'm not gonna go over it verbatim with you, it just, how do you appeal, what your steps are? If you want to submit your application to appeal, we've made it very simple. You click here. And then you just register yourself as a, um, I think this is like a sign, a sign-in. Um, you register yourself, you create a signature, and then you, that'll bring you to your application. You fill out the application right here. Jake, are we able to do this online? Okay. Click to the left, you've developed, you've told the, you're gonna accept the electronic signature, hit continue. The form opens up and you just fill out everything that's highlighted in red. And there are required fields, you know, we're requiring you to fill out your name, your address, your, the reason why you're appealing, all your contact information. Once you fill it out and hit finish, a notification goes to the local board's clerk and a notification comes to the county. So we know immediately who's appealing their values. At that time, um, we can direct an assessor in our office to start the appeals process on that particular parcel. So when the March 15 deadline comes and our local boards are hearing appeals, we can help them with that process and supply them with comparables and maps and any other type of documentation that they are requesting of us.
Carla, when you hit adopt and sign?
Yes.
What happens next?
Jake?
I'm pretty frequent, I use DocuSign a lot, but I'm wondering, does it automatically transmit it to Sioux Falls or do you have to print it out and mail it?
Right here, the, um, the sign, that's when it puts your signature down.
It'll sign it at the bottom and it'll email the jurisdiction.
Yeah, and then your jurisdiction gets emailed.
So sign and submit does it for you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I consider this like third gear. I think we have another phase that we're, Jake and I are willing to explore, like automatically fills in your legal description and name and we're not there yet, but it's, it's a, it's definitely a possibility. The local board clerks were absolutely thrilled at this, especially our high-volume, um, appeals areas. And they're definitely gonna push their folks to fill it out online. And it, 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 it goes through every phase of the appeal process. So this is locked in at the applicant's, um, signature. And then the next part is, uh, the next step is once the local board makes a decision, they will fill out this form. We're notified of their decision and the appellant is notified of their decision immediately. And then it comes to county. I fill out a recommendation, the taxpayer knows my recommendation, the city knows my recommendation, and then it goes to county and then it finds out what the county's, you know, approved value is. So huge, huge advancement from last year. Last year we started with the website, now we're just submitting it online.
Any other questions or comments for Carla?
Well, congratulations, Carla. I think you've made it much more easier for the whole process to begin for taxpayers to make the appeal process, which doesn't make it a mystery anymore. You got facts and it's all there because we got a good website.
Many thanks goes out to our IT department, they are instrumental in this.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Agenda item number 11, renewal of Air Force museum agreement. Mr. Golden?
Thank you. This is a, um, loan grant from the United States Air Force for a airplane that's sitting out at the T Airport. We do it every year, uh, so we just need a approval to renew it. Somebody will go out and take a picture of the aircraft, attach it to it, and then we would send it in so the aircraft can remain out at the T Airport.
You've heard the request.
So move, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Any discussion on the motion and second? Hearing none, Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes. Thank you. Julia Disburg, HR, new hire in the sheriff's office.
Good morning. Uh, two hires this morning. Uh, the first is to hire Sebastian Acosta as a full-time deputy sheriff with the sheriff's office at 2488 per hour effective the 9th of February.
You've heard the request. What are the commission's wishes?
I would so move.
No second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
And lastly, to hire Amanda Johnson as a full-time dispatcher at the sheriff's office at $21 an hour effective the 1st of March.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes. Thank you, Julia.
Thank you.
Payment plan, agenda item number 14. Deborah Block, welcome. Good morning.
Good morning. Um, I'm here requesting a payment plan for a homeowner at, um, parcel number 240621006 Hagmeyer's Edition Lot 6 Block 10. They're requesting the payment plan on the current year taxes. They had just paid last year's taxes and, um, what they owe is approximately $2,500 for the full year. So the payment plan would be like $250 a month, starting, um, March 1st and going through December of this year.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval. I happen to know the party engaged and we have talked, discussed on that. And I'd like to thank Debbie for working with this family to, as they put this, uh, very tough and sad situation together and get their property tax brought up.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion on the sec- motion and second? Hearing none, Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, agenda item number, thank you, Madam Treasurer, appreciate it. Agenda item number 15, I requested this be put on here. Surplus the transfer station property, appoint an appraisal committee and authorize the auditor to advertise for sealed bids. We discussed this, I think, last week or the week before. Uh, we've got a transfer station now that's been, uh, authorized for shutdown or successfully shut down and given the approval by the Department of Natural Resources. So it looks like we have the green light there. It looks like up on our screen, we have, uh, the aerial photo of the transfer station property. Um, I'll be honest with you, I don't know how much this parcel is worth. Um, I wish I did have some, uh, inkling of what the value is. But we do have a nice piece of ground out there, well-maintained by Mr. Hanson, uh, over the number of years he's been there. I think he put a lot of pride into it. Uh, we've got a number of buildings out there, these are steel buildings. Your guess is as good as mine as what it would cost to put those up today, but there is some substantial value there. And, uh, uh, in my discussions with both county staff and the public, um, didn't really run into a lot of resistance with wanting to surplus it. And so now I'm, uh, suggesting that the commission take action on this. Um, of course, whatever gets decided today would be subject to the temporary easement or the temporary lease that we did. But, uh, I don't think that would, uh, take any value away from, uh, from the parcel itself, uh, in the long term. So, um, I'm gonna ask the commission if it wants to discuss this or if it wants to take any action or if I need to step down from the chair to make a motion on my own.
Mr. Chairman, I would, uh, I certainly would think we should, uh, put this on. One thing I would like to know though, I'd like to have some kind of an appraisal done, um, to know for the commission purposes, just what this property is worth. I mean, I, I, I don't know, I mean, we've got some, we've got some good buildings. Uh, one building up on the north side is a very large steel building, excellent structure. I don't know about the, the, the actual buildings that, uh, received the garbage and stuff, but there is, uh, a considerable amount of land on there. And I would wonder if we offered this for sale, conditioned to some, what, prior to that, we'd have some appraisal to know whether that bid was realistic or not. But I do think we ought to put it on so we can get some added revenue. So I don't know how we accommodate that. If we, uh, put it up for sale with the recommendation that, uh, we get an appraisal from some realtor so that we have, uh, we have a guideline from there.
Yeah, I, I mean, I've thought about this too, and maybe other members of the commission have some thoughts too, is, uh, we could either hire someone to do a formal appraisal and we could get a number or we could have a realtor, realtor, um, do a comparative market analysis. I would think market analysis may be cheaper than a formal appraisal, but whatever your wishes are.
One way or the other, we will have to ascertain as to what its market value may be. We'll first declare it surplus and then move forward on setting up that procedure. But today's action, I think you're looking for, Mr. Chairman, is just to officially call it a surplus property to be disposed of in some manner. Is that correct?
It is, Commissioner Poppins. And I think as part of the forming a appraisal committee, I think we could, uh, let the appraisal committee determine whether or not they want to seek a formal appraisal or not to. My guess is a formal appra- you know, we'll have to go out there and get a quote or a bid, but my guess is formal appraisals on residential property normally are in that six to $900 range. I don't know what it would be on a commercial property right now. I just haven't done one in a while.
Well, if we're to take, uh, first step is to declare this surplus, um, I would so move on that action.
Okay, so there's a motion to declare the property a surplus. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion on the se- motion and second to declare the property a surplus? Hearing none, Sean, please call the roll.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Next agenda item number 16, I also asked to put this one on there.
Before you move on, Mr. Chairman, do we have, you mentioned a, a committee, um, would, uh, would it be all right if two commissioners, um, decided to contact, um, a appraiser, for example, and bring that back to you or to the co- to the commission?
I think it's always welcome.
I think Commissioner Gibbons and I would volunteer
Yes.
for that and, uh, we'll bring back, uh, after we contact, uh, a competent appraiser with, uh, their recommendations for what that property value is worth.
Do, uh, what do you want as a timeframe for that?
Shall we say the end of the month?
Very well. We'll look at putting it on the agenda after you report it back. Thank you. Okay, any, anything else on the, uh, transfer station property? Okay, very well. Uh, agenda item number 16, surplus T area property, appoint appraisal committee, authorize the auditor to advertise for sealed bids. Um, you know, I did have some discussion with, uh, commissioners over the weekend as well as on Monday with Commissioner Schmidt about this. You know, at my, at this stage, my intent is not to move forward with the, my intent would be to handle this property just as we did the previous property with the transfer station for right now. Declare it surplus, um, as Commissioner Schmidt told me, that means we put a for-sale sign on it, but it doesn't actually mean, as part of what I'm suggesting, doesn't actually mean that we're selling the property today. As most folks know, um, it's a two and sometimes three-step process for a county to sell land anyway. You've got to have a vote to surplus it, you've got to have a vote to appraise it, um, uh, and depending on who you're selling it to. And then the either second or third step is, um, to accept or reject whatever negotiations or offers or sealed bids are done. So it's a multi-step process. What I'm simply suggesting at this point in time with regard to the T area property is we surplus it, um, we put a big we put a big for-sale sign on it, and we're of course going to solicit offers on it, but that doesn't mean we're selling it at this point in time. It just simply means we're gauging an interest out there. As many people know, commercial properties sit on the market sometimes for years for sale, but it doesn't mean they actually get sold. People may wait till the time and place where they're able to get the right amount of money or get the best offer they can, and it simply sits there with an advertisement on it. And I think that's what we could do here. There is, in the near future, going to be a paved road out there. There's going to be utilities out there. Property is going to be significantly enhanced in value. I would think some of that enhanced value could be baked into a decision today, though. I mean, it's certain that those enhancements are coming. And so any negotiation would obviously include, from the county's perspective, that that value has already been created. It's not as if the utilities are going to be canceled and not brought out there. It's not as if that road is not going to be paved. So we've, we're able to capture those pre-construction activities into our appraisal of the property right now from my point of view, since it's been announced with a certain amount of clarity and certainty that the utilities and the road are going to be paved out there. Now granted, we do, there is discussion and we are waiting for a drainage study to be done out there. I would think that whatever the results of that are, we're going to get that back and we're going to consider that. But we can do, we can walk and chew gum at the same time. We can wait for the drainage study to come back. That may inform us as to how much or how many acres of that property may not be for sale. But at the same time, as my discussion with Commissioner Schmidt was yesterday, why not just put it on the market and see what happens? Doesn't mean that we're moving that property tomorrow. Could somebody, is it possible somebody could offer us $3 million for that property tomorrow? Of course, anything could happen. You know, there's a difference between probability and possibility, right? But if that happened, that would, you know, we, we don't want to forego any lucrative opportunities just because we wanted to wait for the drainage study. But we also want to reserve the opportunity for that drainage study to come in and see what it says. So my proposal here today is put the thing on the market. We tell people it's for sale. We obviously solicit and take input on what somebody may want to offer us, but it's going to be subject to a temporary easement that's out there for the next year. It's going to be subject to a possible drainage plan. But what it does is kickstarts negotiations and it kickstarts input from the public on people who may want to purchase it. So that's what I would suggest today. And if there's any other commissioners who would like to discuss or take action on it, so be it.
We did have, for clarification purposes, I had some reservations on Commissioner Aaron's first proposal to put this piece of property for sale because I didn't think that, that could be premature. As previously mentioned, when you hard-surface a road and you put sewer and water, you have a very desirable situation. And knowing that, I think the city of T, I think I talked with the mayor who looked down the road and I asked them for their future, what they looked at for this part, particular property. And that would be a commercial and light industrial, which is in keeping with what's out there. So the idea was, as Commissioner Aaron's has explained, we just put it up. We just put the for-sale sign up, see what happens. There'd be a lot of situations in there similar to what the transfer station is. I'm sure we would get an assessment of the property when whoever expresses an interest. But there are several steps. That doesn't mean that you're just going to rush it and sell it by the acre. I think once you get this thing down the road, you can sell it by the foot probably. But it does serve public, to the public that this property is going to be for sale. And it does allow for commercial developers, I think, for that looking down the road and long-range planning to know that that particular property is up and may enter negotiations with us. I don't know. I mean, I think it's, it's good public notice. I don't have, I don't have any heartburn with putting it on the market for, for sale. I don't know. Other commissioners can voice your opinion.
Is that your motion?
If I don't, if we don't have any more discussion, that's-
I'll discuss on the, on the, on the motion, so.
There you go. You want to discuss on the motion, Commissioner? Okay, I will move that we put this property up for sale, period.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second to put the property up for sale. Is there any discussion?
I, questions, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's or Commissioner Schmidt, have either one of you had an opportunity to visit with either planning, zoning staff to find out what impact if, in their desire to try to look at this as a detention, retention area to improve the Nine Mile Creek, what impact by declaring it surplus may have on that?
You mean on the application?
Correct, and/or the project down the road.
Well, I can, I will answer, Commissioner Poppins, what I see that there is only a certain amount of property that is of any interest to any potential developer. There remains a huge portion of that that would remain kind of a constant wetland. And that particular area, to me, still isn't attractive for water retention and for using Nine Mile Creek as somewhat of a reservoir. And I don't know about, I think, I don't know where the application process is, if Toby's completed it. I was told once we did have that completed and we were waiting for the results, but I don't know. I haven't heard any updates.
So the answer is no. My concern still remains if, if our intent is to try to utilize it as a potential wetland or lowland detention, retention. For those that did not remember, a large portion of that, what has been referred to as lowland, is actually buildable ground. It may not seem possible, but a developer could come in and fill that, some of that in and build on it based on what 404 and Corps of Engineering determination had been, been done. I just urge caution not to forego an opportunity to make a huge impact into the Nine Mile Creek drainage area. I am very confident that whatever is left that is buildable will be of a huge asset, even more so than what was paid for the property land. And the T area commercially is selling $5 once developed and up per acre. And that's not just small tracts, that's four, five, six acre tracts or larger. So I think it is a huge asset, and I'm very going to much be supportive of capitalizing on that good investment in the future. I just don't, at this point, after many, many years of hoping to acquire that property because it has been identified for many years as a, a key potential avenue. We've talked about potentially raising the road so we can hold water there as well as detention. In a preliminary discussion of what to do with that property, there was two ideas, raising the road as well as dredging and trying to create holding capacity there. The holding capacity was deemed to be too expensive because we didn't own the property and would have to haul off the dirt. With us holding the title of that property, that option may become much more desirable. So that too may have an impact into what is marketable. We may be able to use some of the area that needs to get dredged and, and fill some of the other ones. The other point of is, I do want us to look at potentially making sure that the restrictions for development are on there so it doesn't impact negatively into the Nine Mile Creek as well, so. I just want us to urge caution. I, I'm totally in support of, once we know for sure what it is that we, we have excess of, that we, that we make that very clear before we even move forward. I don't know what the impact would be to try to take it back out of surplus property to use it. That's a, a question that I, I have no idea, so.
Commissioner Schmidt, your motion was to sell the property. I've been reminded here that the proper terminology is to surplus the property. Would that be your mo, do you want to clarify your motion?
I think that's, that's the proper protocol. Before we go there, I'd like, Sean, would you call Toby and find out where that application process on that wetland situation for that property is, if that's been completed or not? But I would, I would clarify my motion to declare this property a surplus at this time?
Is that your second, Commissioner Gibbon?
That'll be my second.
Okay, so before we take any action here, Commissioner Poppins would like, wants to say something?
I can maybe potentially answer that question because I have spoken with Toby and staff. The application has been submitted. We have not heard back. Once the application, if it is awarded or funding, then the process would, would commence, which could take approximately in Toby's thought process. And if he's coming down, he can either change it or modify it approximately two months to find out what, what all can happen there. So I'm not talking about a huge delay on this. I just think it would be prudent for us to not make it more difficult for us if we didn't have to, so.
Mr. Goldman?
I would just remind everyone that the part of the purchase agreement allowed for some of the land or the dirt on top to be removed. And so that's one of the other things we'd have to contend with if you're going to attempt to send out for bids or anything else is, there's a lease on it, there's the removal of the dirt and some other things that we'd have to work out and how we'd actually describe the property.
Yeah, I took a look at the lease last night. We do have some contractual obligations. I think the way the lease is written is we have to provide the dirt, but it doesn't say where it comes from. So if they want to dig a hole in the front of the courthouse here 10,000 feet deep, they could. I'm joking, of course. But I think we're all aware of that, of that contractual obligation. Thank you, Mr. Goldman. And I think at this point, we're just surplusing the property. We're inching towards some kind of resolution as opposed to moving full throttle, light speed ahead.
Toby, I had a question on this property that we have by T and we set it on application. Commissioner Poppins has given us a pretty good update as to, it has been submitted and you're waiting for the results?
Yes. And so actually, it's Debbie Block and Harold that are part of the process too. It's a FEMA grant. We've, we've submitted the application, went through the state, now it's submitted to the, to the federal agency. My understanding is with the new administration, though, they put pause on some awards and some criteria. So I don't have a timeline for you of when it'll be approved.
Was this a conservation grant or was it a, like a build grant or a, you know, some kind of other that falls into other than what we had intended? Because we looked at it as a drainage or wetland project or a holding project. So did that fall under special guidelines? I mean, because you know, we, we've, we've submitted other grants for roads and for bridges and things like that. This isn't in that same category, though, is it?
It's a, it's a FEMA study, engineering grant, yeah. So we, we solicited a request from Wink Engineering. I think it's $30,000, right around there, to do a feasibility study on potential detention on that property. And so we submitted, it was grant-eligible. We talked to state officials. They said this, this would be a, a, a good project. They're well aware of Nine Mile and the implications that it has on our county and on the developing area. So I just, I don't have any update for you at this time. You know, possibly by next week, I could, I could do some checking with the state and see where we're at with it, so.
Harold, you got?
Just that when Debbie Block and I received the letter from Heather Almag, our person and peer that works with these things, the application's been approved by the state. It's being sent to FEMA Regent 8 for the H and H study. Also in that letter, it states it can take up to a year to get approval from FEMA Regent 8, so. That's, might be want to consider it also.
Okay. Question, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, absolutely.
Actually, for Toby, or anybody that might be able to answer. If the county were to go ahead and, and pay for, hire and pay for the grant or for the study, could it be reimbursed afterwards or not?
No, it's not my understanding, no.
Sorry, what was, I didn't hear that.
No, you'd have to get approval, pre-approval before we can start the study.
Can't do a pay-ahead.
Correct.
So in lieu of, and I'm asking the board, would there any be any desire to go ahead on a $30,000 expenditure to clarify, clarify what is, you know, something that, that I still believe is strong and that we need to retain to improve the Nine Mile Creek drainage basin? So we can move forward clearly and remove or declare surplus the, the other parts of the property? Or should we just continue to wait to see what happens? It's just a question. I, I had not asked anyone prior to this, so.
John?
I just wanted to clarify that the study could be paid for and that if a project is approved following the study, that yes, those funds could be reimbursed. But only in the case of if a project is approved following the study. That's a new feature in this grant. Just for your information. When we did the Spring Creek Tributary project, that was a pilot program to allow us to get the money that we spent for the study to be reimbursed following the approval of the grant. So they did retroactively pay us for that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, if, let me restate what you said. I think you're saying can't do pay-ahead on the study, but-
Correct.
And get reimbursed. But if we wanted to do pay-ahead on the study and then the grant gets approved and then we do a project after the fact, we could use the approval for the application that was originally for the study to pay for the project.
I think you lost me in the last part, but the, if a project is approved based on this study-
Right.
and we go ahead and do that, then the costs, at that point, then we can include the original study costs in it.
Right, so the study costs $30,000, the project costs-
Million.
A million. You'd be able to clip your $30,000 coupon from the government.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
John or Toby, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, absolutely.
I believe you had indicated, or someone had indicated, maybe it would take two months to do the, to actually do the study or would it take longer than that, do you think? Anybody have an idea?
Ballpark figure.
I didn't catch that. John, what was that?
Oh, that would be a ballpark figure.
Ballpark, okay. Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes, question. I mean, is this something that was usually, that is always done by the seller or the buyer? Or just this type of study?
Well, this is, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, of course.
I mean, this is a unique situation because we're dealing with, you know, buildable land in an area that has been identified, John and I. John, how many years have we talked about this, this location, many years and, and potential that it may be? But, you know, it's a unique situation. I don't know that there's ever been a situation like this for this kind of a thing. Because we're trying to identify what, if we want to keep some and then what, what would be buildable. Again, some of that, what has been referred to as the low area, and even my own determination would be not desirable, buildable, but it actually is buildable. So I would want us to at least protect that so that didn't get filled in down the road. A question that I had asked Commissioner Aaron's and Commissioner Schmidt, and I'll ask Toby or staff. Anybody have any idea if this would negatively affect any projects moving forward? If we grant the applications, if we, at this point, declare it surplus? I'm, I'm grinning, trying to decide if there's, there is or isn't. I just don't know.
The property itself?
The property itself, if it declares surplus as excess property, would that impact the applications, the project? I would imagine we would have to at least take it back out of surplus if we were going to do something.
I wouldn't know that.
And I, I don't know either.
I kind of liken this to a situation where a private developer owns commercial land or a land that eventually will be used for commercial purposes. Normally, in this part of the world, here in the Sioux Falls, Lincoln County area, it's ag land. And typically, they'll put a for-sale signed up, but they may do improvements or engineering on the property simultaneously. I kind of liken it to that, since there's no real precedent here in Lincoln County, but I think we can accomplish both goals, and that is to send the signal to the marketplace that the property is available, but also to continue marching down the field with regard to our obligation to do some flood control and drainage issues as well. And I just, my reading of the statutes is, is that just declaring it surplus is the door we have to open in order to send the signal that government-owned land is available for purchase. And I don't want to foreclose any, any other opportunities out there, because, for example, if a lucrative offer comes along, we may be able to leverage a lucrative offer into doing the project. And it's going to be a holistic process. You know, for example, somebody comes along, says, I'll give you $3 million bucks for that land, and then if we know that there's an offer there with a bona fide purchaser for value, we can then turn around with more confidence in wanting to engage in some type of pro, project with regard to the wetlands there. And so I think all of these things need to happen simultaneously or on a parallel planning process, and I think that's what surplusing the property allows us to do.
Are you talking about surplusing the entire property or just the buildable part of the property?
Surplus the whole property for now. I mean, there's no prohibition on being able to do projects on surplus property, it's just a designation under state law that allows us to tell people, hey, it's possibly for sale, depending on the offer.
I would be hesitant on the property that's, that you would be designating for the project being surplus, that's just my opinion.
Any state law to back that up, though?
I just, thinking reasonably with past experience on the granting process and such.
Thank you. Well, I'll call the question on the motion to surplus the property.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
And I want the record to show that it is, and I'm in favor, not in favor of surplusing what is excess, it's just that I think it causes a unnecessary burden to a very needed drainage plan for the property.
Agenda item 17.
May I please ask for some clarification for items 15 and 16?
Yeah.
You are just simply surplusing these properties, where we haven't appointed an appraisal committee for either of them yet, and you're not authorizing the auditor to advertise for sealed bids at this time, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
And then, Mr. Chairman, if I may ask?
Yeah, go ahead.
I know that there's several other county-owned properties, are we looking at all of those properties as well, then?
I think we should have planning and zoning and/or the auditor's office, or whoever compiles the master list of county-owned properties, if you will. I would be okay with doing a deep dive into looking at all those parcels and seeing, you know, essentially do an inventory, maybe do an appraisal. I was scooting around on GIS the other night, and there's a surprising number of small little parcels owned by the county here and there, so I think we could take a look at that, maybe even put it on the agenda for next week for action. But we'll, we'll, I'll communicate offline with the auditor's office about putting that on the agenda.
I think it's going to be a little bit more than next week.
Okay, very well.
If you don't mind, because we've got.
Understood.
Harla's in the middle of Odell and with their appraisals and all that, but we can start working on a list.
Thank you, understood. Number 17, Creed Airport Advisory Committee authorized auditor to fill, advertise its vacancies. So Commissioner Poppins called me over the weekend, just asked for a little bit more time on this to be able to, for him and Commissioner Gibbon, to be able to speak with Helms and Associates before we stand up the committee. I think the two of them wanted to get a briefing from Helms to figure out what the lay of the land is, since we are now attempting to restart the Airport Advisory Board, which has been dormant or maybe non-existent for a number of years now. You know, we did have some good feedback from Helms and Associates. You know, thankfully, they told us, we're not in, we're completely, we've got a green light to set up an advisory committee, there's no problems with the FAA to want to do anything like that, and so it appears that there's no roadblocks in the way. But out of courtesy to the other commissioners, they did ask for a timeout on this so they could go meet with Helms, and as Commissioner Gibbon told me, he's ready to jump in the truck and drive up there today, so. But I'll leave that up to him, but I can't make a motion to table this, but that is the discussion I had with Commissioner Poppins, and I told him I've got no problem with that.
I, if you're entertaining a motion, I shall move, I will table it.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Sean, please call the rule.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes. That's the end of our agenda, do we have any need for an executive session? Is there a request for that?
Yes, for contractual and.
I would entertain a motion then from one of the commissioners.
So move, Mr. Chairman, enter executive session under all those numbers that you have on the back there?
Very well.
South Dakota codified law, something, something, something.
Very well, the motion is to enter executive session under 1-25-2, sub 1, 3, and 4. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Sean, please call the rule.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes. Okay, well.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. Sean, please call the rule.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes, thank you, we'll be adjourned for today.